Thank you all for sending the pleasurable regents now.
For the regents, to the United States of America and to the Republic of the States, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as strong.
As to compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, P. L. Michael 75, out of the notice of this meeting, it has been provided in all hands. Notice of this meeting is forwarded to the Edinburgh Press, the Coaster and Star Ledger on, on... July 3rd? Yes, December? December couldn't be September, it has to be October? October? Oh, okay. July 30, 2013, and posted on Georgia Morning, same page, all notices on Powell and City Council.
Here.
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 Here. Okay, there's mostly going to be public sessions?
Second.
Please come to the mic, state your name and address if you have three minutes to speak.
Ma'am, my name is William Markner, I'm actually at 148 Mount Herman Way at Hartman, Dewey and Ocean Grove, Colorado. I happen to be 1711 Third Avenue at Yassbury Park in 3117th Avenue in Yassbury Park. In the New York City Housing Network, we'll be seeing a two-bedroom house in that way in Yassbury Park. I am also a fellow in Amnesty International, violence against women and children, particularly girls. And I also to share with you, I'm professionally erred 2011, Kimberly Trues, who registered young executive director. As a member of the Partners of Conscience in Amnesty International, it's been my obligation to interview young women who are Latina, pretty much, women and girls who work between 8:37 and 1:00 branch, Long Bridge and Yassbury Park. I've been really, it's important to me to see the mistreatment of young people in the workplace that they face possible deportation, they get on their hands and knees with the floorboards, and they don't make the money, they're people who do the same type of job within this coalition. I understand that is with your direction in the town council, that we're going to have literacy increases here through the Yassbury Park public library. I got straight A's in both Winston Fairhader Regional High School and at the Central and every other college that I went to in advance of placement in American history, also in English. I'm very much interested in developing a program with books, not poets, and literacy and brainpower not falling in the ground. My reason for being here is to greatly heard gun violence here in Yassbury Park. And I really don't see, having been on Prospect Avenue today, right in front of Brother's Barbershop, where I'm going to get my haircut tomorrow, that the issue in the community, not the black community, but the community on the west side, is not so much the fact that people are bad people. The people don't have the services of the west side of the community that we would have more. We talk about waterfront slides and things like that in the boardwalk, which is fun. What we don't have, and what we don't have in the west side, is we have nothing for these children in terms of having the opportunity to have a slide, to have something, to have something.
Sir, there's three minutes, I'll tell you what. If you call the Secretary Cassandra Dickerson, I am in the office hours every Wednesday from 9:00 to 12:00.
Yes, ma'am.
And the first and third Friday from noon to four. So please go, I'll make an appointment, just in case someone else gets an appointment.
May I make one final recommendation?
I have to go on to, no, I have to go on to the secretary's.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
I mentioned there's a 1770, contains that there is ordinance in Yassbury Park, there is Mount dumpster, and it's run long next to my living room. And I want to know, how did this dumpster, when there, if there's ordinance? I've been there since 1969, I didn't come yesterday. There was no driveway there, there were no dumpster there. And there was garbage, there was, next to Park Avenue in the back, there was never in the front. But last night, 5:00, 2:00, they throw in garbage, even the natter owners of church. If people doesn't live there, somebody passed by and told them, "You wake up." It smells terrible, and box, I mean ridiculous. If you look at 6000, where was the nice street? Why would we need a dumpster? How did dumpster went there? Who give the permission? We never notified, there was no driveway there, we never notified, who give that?
I don't want you to give the address right now, Jerry, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I will, this is, first of all, I don't disagree with anything that Mr. Marchant has said. And it is under investigation, our, actually, there are a lot of resources right now, code enforcement, police department, et cetera, that are investigating this point that he's making. After, we haven't found any record of permission given for the dumpster being a property in or for a driveway to be. So, you know, so I would appreciate the fact that he's here tonight, speaking hopefully. He's been dealing with this tool, and we are investigating right now. We will come up with a solution for this.
About seven years I've been fighting him, fighting him.
Seven years?
Then, when I was asked for the permission to build that mighty building, that every process, your garbage will be back. Okay, the garbage in the back, it's a nice little house, color, nobody sees it, it's a beautiful. We keep our building beautiful, clean, and we have to be fine. Yeah, that's right, I want, I want the justice.
Jerry, you have any address?
Yes.
This address, okay. I'm sure all council people want to drive by there.
Thank you very much, thank you very much.
Good evening, I'm Mayor, and I'm the county manager, I reside at 1501 Park Avenue. But I'm here as only half of Shiloh Community Fellowship, looking at 142 Dewitt Avenue. My concern is planting other trees, as they were done on Saturday. And at the end of July, I was called, the church was called, regarding participating in planting other trees on Dewitt Avenue. And I told them at that time that I did not see a problem with it. However, my pastor and trustee were on vacation, so when they came back in September, they asked some common questions, like, who's going to maintain those trees? When the roots start growing, it's going to be like a sidewalk, and about the, if there are wires, or the trees are under the wires, who's going to take care of all that? So at the last city council meeting, I did get the number for Tom. I called him the very next day, calling the city council meeting, and told him that the pastor and trustee did not want to participate. He gave me an explanation about the trees and the height, and I told him that that's why the churches died, not to participate. However, on Sunday, two trees are planted at the north side of the property. And they want, the trustee and the pastor want, do not want them to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm the coordinator, Secretary, Free Council. I'm coming to this, I want to make a film to the council. Last night, I attended the community meeting, as I all do do, in both Yassbury Park and Neptune. A lot of these meetings are held about how it is we can stop the violence in our community. And last night, there was a program held in Yassbury Avenue, at First Temple Hospital Church, and the crime stoppers program is there, which is a nonprofit organization that comes out of the prosecutor's office. That's a short version of it. Anyway, after they got up and they explained the program, and how we can report anonymously, and be a worth $5,000, and they listed some of the unsolved crimes that go out of Neptune, I asked this question, I said, "Well, do you guys have a billboard on it?" And they said, "Well, we're nonprofit," and they explained how much money they had. I said, "Well, it's a little bit out of our budget to get a billboard, but we've got these nice pamphlets that they hand out." Now, everybody at the meeting got a pamphlet, however, the people at the meeting are the ones who need the pamphlets. So what I'm asking the council tonight, and I will be going to Neptune's meeting, asking them as well, a billboard costs about $2,200 in this community to post for four weeks. I would like to ask this council, if they would fund for a billboard to be put up on the crime stoppers program, because I don't know who murdered anybody in my community, but I know there's somebody who does. And if we put those up, and somebody's walking around who knows this information, and they see the billboard, because they know it's likely will not come into the community meeting, but if they can use $5,000, they might make a phone call to target whoever it is that's responsible for the recent killings in our community. So I'm asking the council tonight, if they consider funding a billboard, and maybe soon I want to go to Neptune and ask them to do the same. Because the way I see this problem that we have, I don't see it as a Yassbury issue or a Neptune issue. I see it as a community issue, we're two towns over one village. And if you read the paper, there's people from Yassbury, I think there was the young man that was stabbed to death, the young man from Neptune, that killed my young girl from Yassbury. I mean, of course, there's other issues, and, you know, trying to get into the boot of course, just to arrest those sort of things, of course, about the things that happen. But that information, it was like, for me, a light bulb went off, you know? And I'm like, if I knew, you know, I would call, just so, you know, because I want the guns off of our streets. And so I'm asking, if you guys can partner with crime stoppers. Because just like the lights being out, there's a quality of life issue, unless when we have one street sweep for Yassbury, it's a quality of life issue, these murders are a quality of life issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm there, I have to give you a couple things. One, I'd like to thank the city for moving the rocks, there, and we, you know, talked to me, and Kevin came out, just went over it, you know? Quinn checked out, Mr. Cohen helped out, and, you know, I would really appreciate the rocks coming out. And this Quinn just told me the next few weeks, you know, they'll be all out there, and I looked at a lot of, you know, crime is going on over there. So thank you, a lot of times, it's always a good aside, but, you know, it doesn't say thank you a lot of times. Second, is I want to applaud the efforts of the police department, and the county police, and the security for the Yassbury Park football game, that we put to it at night. I would encourage people who haven't gone to a football game, or the setting of that stadium on the lake, it's really a beautiful thing to see at night, no other town in the county has that. Where you have a lake, and a football field, and everybody sitting on one side, and they will say, I mean, we worried about whether it was not going to be safe, she had to the prosecutors office, and the police department, and the security for the school, made it an extremely safe venue for everybody. So, you know, with the clause, that happened also. Now, two things I want to ask. One, this Quinn, I was running a lot of mornings on the boardwalk, you know, the dogs, I'll get one, I'm walking. But anything going to be done about that far north end of the boardwalk, far north end of the boardwalk? With the exception of that, Yassbury Park has a great boardwalk as far as when you're walking, or you're running. But on that north end, those boards are warm, and I know, you know, with tax, but, I mean, is there something that can be done about that, where if somebody, you know, summer coming up, you know, people won't be out there all of the time? But can those boards be straightened out, you know, so they won't twist ankles and fall down? If anybody takes a walk out there, you'll see that they're pretty much off in that, that section of the boardwalk, people will be loved. But it's a far north end, I'm not going to play around with that, so, I mean, that's something that needs to be addressed. Next thing I'm asking, you know, listen now, I know the police does a great job collecting garbage, but we would ask them to do two things. One, a lot of times, the guys who are in the hurry, they turn the garbage cans upside down. When they finish dumping the garbage, I see you shaking your head up and down, like, so now, you're trying to keep it clean, now you got to go out there, because if any garbage left in the garbage can, or something broke out of that, now you're not cleaning up behind the garbage, and I don't think that's what they should do. Second, I would ask if they put them on the curb, you know? When we put them, we put them on the curb, and just today, yeah, today. When I went out, yesterday, when I went out, you know, when garbage cans were in the street, you know, I don't put them in the street. I'll put my garbage out on the curb, I will make sure everything is bagged up, you know? But we just asked the city to turn them where they are, and know they're in the front. And I would expect to challenge those of us, just to say.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Mayor, Council, or Mount Markner should have you. I'm also very impressed by the response to the playground rattle complaint. I will remind you that the last meeting, I also brought up the rocks as landscaping in public spaces complaint. And I'd like to see the same diligence exercised for that issue, because wherever I see these landscape rocks being placed, they're inevitably all over the sidewalks, creating a hazard. So please address that with the same diligence, or if you don't want to, I'd like to know why. Why do you think one is important, but the other one is not? The other thing I'm very interested in is the boardwalk reconstruction. Very intrigued by filling in the cavity underneath the boardwalk, great engineering solution. I'm pleased Mr. Reedy brought up the look and feel concept of how this will be. They addressed on the feel, as far as the fanciness, but I really didn't hear much about the look. I would like to know, what's this going to look like? What's up? Is the classic vintage pattern being kept? The diagonals with the chair rails, lots of significant to Asbury Park's boardwalk. There was an intentional thought that when they recreated that, when the boardwalk was rebuilt the last time, Asbury Park's beachfront is part of the American Treasures Program, federal program called Save America's Treasures. It's a very historically significant visual effect that they have. I'd like to make sure that whatever the underlying construction is, that visual aesthetics remain consistent with the nature of what's going on there. Yes, that's about it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Some answers to those questions, appreciate it.
Well, the first, let's just say the last one, and I have that same concern that you do, that the boardwalk be consistent in terms of the look, that Harry Paul, whatever you want to call that. And that is exactly what's going to go back, right? So that's the fact piece. All right, the feel, I mean, I know a lot of people in the city want on the boardwalk, and so that's, I think that's also a concern. I mean, I see a lot of these boardwalks, like, New York is all in concrete and stuff like that, and that is, I would never want to see that happen here. It's far, what was the other version, the rocks?
Rocks, skyscrapers, stones being placed in public space, and then falling off the sidewalks.
Okay, all right, well, I think the most honest answer to that is, you know, why didn't we address, why didn't we address Danny Harris's question about the playground? Because, right, because it's more immediate. I mean, I went over there, as Harris came to the microphone, like, I mentioned this earlier in the meeting, and I saw children, three-year-olds, four-year-olds, picking up those rocks, carrying them onto the playground, dropping them off, then whatever. I think it just had to have a more immediate feel, not that, not that your concern is, not as important, I think, with a sense of urgency about playing around with those kids.
It's a more global feel, it's, it's now, now.
I'm not arguing, I'll give you my best answer as to why that first, and then we'll look at the rest of it.
I appreciate you looking into this.
Absolutely.
Because you'll see those stones falling off the sidewalks.
No, thank you.
Should be large, twice as large and great.
Thank you.
Well, Chief Jones, I'm a member of Allen Chapel. First thing, I'm amazed that somebody is getting stones on the playground. Nobody does that anymore. Major Mike, there are issues, just to bring that to you. I've got a couple of texts and calls, calls about trees on Dewitt Avenue. My family property, they lived on Dewitt Avenue a lot times, they lived in the area. It's a wonderful place, the trees and the plants, and all that, da-da-da-da-da-da. My question would be, why Dewitt Avenue? Out of all the streets, it's not an avenue, per se, by width. There are trees and sap, or saplings there now, on a sidewalk that's very narrow. Set back, on the housing there, is not as far back as it may be where I live. You have porches and stairs that are adjacent immediately, three, four, six inches from the sidewalk. Who came up with this idea? So now, and I don't know that the people that set this up there have ever walked down Dewitt Avenue. Now you're walking down Dewitt Avenue, and you have somebody at my height, five feet, five inches, ducking sapling branches.
Please just direct your comments to the council.
Now, well, that's what I'm doing. I wanted to know, is, did these need a reevaluation? Because there's several people that worry about these, they're kind of like taken back and surprised that this has occurred. Because I don't know, there may have been some cursing, I understand that Michelle said the Shiloh Avenue, they didn't want it, they got it anyway. Something needs, somebody needs to go back and pull off some stuff. There's a bundle load directly across from Allen Chapel, 214, so the address may be 213. The bulk of those steps are literally on the sidewalk. So, I mean, if you were taking a seven-foot or six-foot sofa out, you run into a sapling. Somebody needs to go back and dismantle or remove or re-figure this whole engine here. That's my concern, and I'm going to go back to the folks that did contact me with concerns about it.
And so, well, I would like to respond kind of briefly, in terms of the facts as I know them. And the facts as I know them is that the American Forestry, it's a national program, offers a certain number of trees. And a group, I believe it's the National Forestry, the state, drove through the state, drove through Yassbury Park, and determined Dewitt left trees.
Oh, well, trees.
And then, well, I'm just, I'm giving you the facts because I know them, right? So I wasn't, I wasn't on the tour. And my understanding was that everybody on the street was reached out to and asked if they wanted a tree. And then, again, my understanding that most people did, a couple here and there didn't, because they weren't owners. And then the second part of that was that one of the churches came back and said they didn't want a tree. They didn't want the tree, they didn't plant a tree. And Shiloh is a little new to me, because they were out when we were planting the trees. So that was a little bit in that they didn't want a tree. The other one, the person that you brought up, from Kingsgate, is the, who was the chair of the environmental safety commission. But again, the fact I know them is that people who, so if you have specific people who were not contacted, and a tree was put there, absolutely, I'll take that.
Mr. Kowalski, hopefully we'll be here the next council meeting to give a report on that.
Because that's going to be a problem when you, like I said, the permits on the sidewalks. Because common sense needs to prevail here.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Common sense needs to prevail.
If you have actual people that didn't want the trees and got them, before the end of this meeting, just mean up to me and give me an answer.
Next. I went to the PNC Bank, which I love, go to, very lovely. And I noticed that they closed off the right-of-way there. So I called City Hall, plus everybody's live here, so nobody knows there's been a right-of-way for a hundred years there. I want to know why it's closed off. That's one thing. The other thing is, Mr. Reedy, page three of the last meeting we were at, I was wondering if you had a chance to look at that and give me an answer.
Page three, do you remind me what page three was?
Sixteen employees getting some kind of a reimbursement under a health plan?
Oh, actually, I, I didn't speak to our own director personnel, for what's her better title. I'd get your information tomorrow. She has to put together a report.
Okay. And the other thing, about the tax rate, nine percent. I mean, like, I just don't know what you're going to do about it, but I look at the bill resolution, and I don't see anybody trying to save any kind of money here. At the bill resolution, there's eight hundred and something thousand dollars. I mean, nine percent is a steep amount for us to be paying. And I think that this council should be looking at ways to save money. And other towns are doing it, other towns are doing four-day work week and things like that. I mean, I hope you could come up with some ideas like that, instead of just a social idea. Let's get fiscal about this. And because people can't be chasing people out of town. Well, look at the four sales signs, and you'll see. People can't afford to live here. It's too expensive. Everything is too expensive. But about the right-of-way, I want to know about that. That's been there over a hundred years. Why is it closed off now? Nobody knows. The engineers and now bees know, he looks on the tax map, it's not there. They don't have right-of-ways on tax maps. Go behind PNC Bank, and that street goes right out to Fifth Avenue. Now they have a fence up. I don't know who put the fence up, is it VNA? I don't know. I don't think it was PNC, because I asked inside, I said, they didn't know who put the fence up. Do you know? Does anybody know?
Nobody.
Nobody knows?
So it's a good question, you're right.
It's closed off, and VNA is not irritable, by the way. So I would look into that, because those of us that are paying taxes would like to use that right-of-way. I don't think they should have, I don't know how they did that, but aren't anybody in this city knowing about it? I mean, I just don't understand that, things are done around here. We call up, we'll get into that, okay? Yeah, that's very important, because all of us use that little, the street, that little right-of-way. When we go to the bank, and it goes right out to Fifth Avenue, okay? That's not private property, that's a right-of-way. Next. Next, I know we had it, but it's not right.
Head of the Department of Public Safety, I think I have a question. You were just saying about the crown, not the deck, the five years, they have to be, dug by the law, dug by the side. They had that corner finished, and they're bumped out. Now the bumped out's knocked out, then they dug the street up, and they had big metal planks across there. Now today, they had a big crane, and they had put these steel pylons, and they're this big. I mean, I don't know how many of them, they hammer in, it's all in the streets. What's that all about? What happened?
That's the base city.
They do an after they do the street and everything?
That's a great question. That was my initial question, that was, I don't know what's better.
What do you mean a base saver?
It's one of the chambers that we got working, to catch all the flow holes, and otherwise, this, you know, discharge at the lake, plus the lake, this stops at that time.
I mean, so who, nobody knows, like, what you're saying, things get done before. I mean, the whole city does that, they've got new streets, cut it up, cut it up. I mean, so who watches these from, you know, all this nonsense that goes on? They got the old block, I mean, the traffic down there is like unbelievable, trying to get around all the, huh?
I'll check further with the farmers, but I will say it's not a fine payment that they cut into the bank. So clearly, it's a fine payment, because I really think we're up there more. As a matter of fact, and you're ready?
I'm ready to.
As a matter of fact, you want, absolutely, I was just going to say, we actually had to rip out the entire link, Kingsley and Yassbury. Again, you don't have to take it once, because they left concrete, some days in there, and it was going to disrupt the metal, that's not enough. So that's a regular thing.
So that's the water drainage?
It's, we have, I think we have even across the city.
There are big guidelines that, kind of like, if we're breaking that, we can probably say, the last, like, five, five, seven years. The whole purpose of the guard line, the base service that you were talking about, the whole purpose of the guard lines are to keep litter, debris, bottles, things like that, out of our lakes, out of the ocean. So it's called base service because it catches these, these large items, excuse me?
They stay underground? Or they're clean?
They're foxed, essentially, just picture the standard, like, or animal, only much larger than the Essentially, it's just picture the standard in living or animal, only much larger than Paris apartments. The water's allowed to flow out, the corals stay in, the water floods up and out. I mean, it makes my job harder, but I think it's good for the lakes.
Ladies, Richard, and I would like to thank you, Jeffrey. Thank you, Jeffrey, for the, the ability, the ability to really, really deal with it. And the other reason I'm going to do it is because I also heard the same thing. And as far as the moratorium, is it also, did it also tie to the infrastructure on the west side of the main street? Because, and then also I heard you say something about the sweeping. And I remember, and I boiled this, talked this for a whole period when the streets were tore up over here. I remember Ryan saying that it's taking so long because we're putting in all this stuff. But I heard you say something about sweeping. And sweeping, you said, was repairing some of the equipment that was already down. So I know, I know it's more on the bridge, but what did they, did they put in all this stuff? Or did they do some sweeping?
I was mistaken. I said springwood, I meant to say Lakeview. It was more the city, except for the, right, no, springwood was wrong.
Again, with the moratorium, I see markings on Bridge Avenue. So they did all the cleaning, or they're going to always begin again?
That's another order that I can make on Bridge.
Okay, well, there's markings still there.
But I will say statewide moratorium, I'm not, maybe you can use another word, but the worst argument I was prepared, it was county as more sorry as well as the state, as far as stating into their voice and future. Not say why, I cannot totally, I don't know, it's a specific work order by workers. We try to keep everybody out of all the streets.
Thank you.
New York Council, very spannable. When I went there after you did, I saw on the news yesterday, the guy had a video camera on and he was doing video, videotaping the road breaks that happened with, I guess, shooting a motorcycle. And I both hand in hand with the car and stuff, but then I think, we really have a way for people to film this stuff anonymously so they can be a tool for the police department. The other thing I wanted to say, a force-like thing, when I was bringing it up, here's the way. If you light up the area, it more likely to keep criminals from getting out. I made the property from my alphabet that you light up. And if I said multi-family, it wouldn't go hard at all. Even landlords should be responsible for keeping the neighborhood safe. The other thing, on the first day, everybody, Treasure Island, they still park there. You all there in the sidewalk, you have to walk in the street if you're on that side of the street. And I walked out, I was just three times, the trucks are still there. The other thing is, I think everybody in the room, the Daniel you like, was contacting our state officials or federal, I mean, the people in Congress. They're shutting down the government affecting the residents here in Asbury Park. And you actually doing something about it. I don't try and limit it, but I like to make that contribution. Now, when we have gone up about the, the nine percent tax increase, I re, I'm going to rephrase my question from last time. About the blanket PO and John who exited correctly. But there's thirty-five of them in the bill resolution. Total about thirty-five thousand, fifteen thousand dollars. But with the days of computers and fax machines, I mean, I picture that you can scan in the bill and send them right to the purchase office. There really should not be blanket PO in a bill resolution, not thirty-five pieces. I don't know why, when the department gets it, they can't be sent right to the purchase or whatever finance, whatever department it goes to. Because none of us would balance our checkbook, have a thousand or three hundred entry and thirty-five, we don't know where the checks went. But I'm sure you don't get a chance to get double-checked what's going on with the blanket PO. I'm glad that you reviewed the, the bill resolution, I hear you talked about it. But I think that needs to, to get at practice. That's about it.
Thank you.
Excuse us, please, and second.
Second. Right off. Second, more.
Yes.
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 A payroll resolution, period of twenty-three, thirty, for the social security, Medicare, only eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-three cents. Second. Right off.
Yes.
More.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Jeff Barrett Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Camp.
Yes.
Bill resolution, only eight hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and fifty-two cents. Second question. Under McHammond, Scott, and Baut, there's several line items that add up to fifty-seven thousand dollars. The bills go back to two thousand and six through two thousand and twelve. I couldn't get an explanation taken through this short distance. Just wasn't enough time to get your question triggered. Since they're six-year-old bills, can we hold for the joints, can we put the holders, can we give an explanation, are we thinking two thousand and six bills or two thousand and thirteen?
Yeah, I can give you that explanation.
Oh.
Yes. And the explanation is that McHammond has gone, submitted legitimate bills and in many cases, and as a matter of fact, you know, I'll bring it up, do a lot of research on this. Those bills were approved by the government by back then and then helped. Why? I don't know. But they were counted, sometimes, yes, they were counted, but should be, et cetera, but they were never passed. And so, we have done through detailed analysis on this, double and triple check every single bill on that list and determined that they are due and all the McHammond's files that need to be paid. And that's, that's basically, basically housekeeping that, that Rick has been involved in since he came in to be our finance director and clearing up a lot of, a lot of accounts that were just not properly, properly handled. And as a matter of fact, the part about the council, or even children, the not being made, but technically, I guess, what he could have done is just pay them. But he's not comfortable with that because they were just back home. We, we review them to make sure that he was legitimately, he was able to do his work, it was legitimately done, et cetera. And then, going back, he placed on, and that's not all, the old ones, placed on the bill so that it's a current approval going forward. And that's the answer on that.
Are there a lot more out there like that?
Um, I'd, well, I'd have to look and see which ones.
No, but I mean, you guys discovered this company. I mean, are there other companies that we have money from from two thousand and six?
I do not believe so.
So is this one right or anything?
Uh, yes. And John, one of the things, you spent a lot of time looking at bills and going back and doing that, so, you know, I appreciate that. You know, a lot of this is detective work, especially when, you know, you find these old invoices, et cetera, and then, anyway. But I do not think that there are, that there are any others out there like that.
Just seeing though, I have a question. Fred, how do you, you charge my phone besides your contracted price? If someone, when, when, when someone calls, let's say, council or jury or?
Yes.
So how is that rate established?
We charge in increments of an hour, and each, ten increments, each one being up to six minutes. So if we write down a point one, it's, it's a rest between zero and six minutes of our time.
Okay. And are there people outside of the government, and I'm saying private citizens, that call you and question you? And do you bill the city for that?
Occasionally, I will get a call from a resident, not frequently, but occasional. And I do have to account for my time. So I guess I would, I would bill that to the city. If it was a city resident calling me about a question relating to Asbury Park city business, yes.
So I have to ask Terry, is that appropriate and fitting?
Well, I mean, I, if it were excessive, I would say absolutely not. Occasionally, I wouldn't have an issue with it. But I do think that, you know, a procedure should be put in place so that if Fred gets, you know, fifteen calls a week, that, you know, he's not in the awkward position of saying, well, I really can't answer that because I can't, you know. So if he puts it in an awkward position, what I would say is, you know, like, once in a while, I wouldn't have an issue with it. But if, if it, if there are two, I would, I would tell Fred that he should then refer the calls to the city manager. And then, if it's something that, you know, then I can get back to that resident. Because I think there's two pieces here, right? One is that any resident who has a question, that deserves an answer. And we always want to be in a position of addressing answers that, I mean, questions that residents have. Placing Fred in an awkward position where, you know, he, his purpose being for doing work, that's what he does, that's how they are delivering. I think, I think there should be, and I think it's, I'm glad that you raised it here because then any resident can see that it's a public policy discussion. I think Fred should refer to the city manager and I'll follow up on it. And if it's something that requires his attention, then I would be the one making that judgment at all. And then I'll get back to that resident if he is.
Thank you.
Right off.
Yes.
More.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Jeff Barrett Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Camp. The application, first on the extension of purposes of Johnny Max, pursuant back to one on October fifth, and the second one on October thirteenth, approved by the police department. Good.
Second.
Captain, right off.
Yes.
More.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Jeff Barrett Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Camp.
Yes.
Revolting legal license out by Monarch, eleven one to Asbury, Asbury was currently inactive and had a complicated special rule.
Move it.
Second, Captain, right off.
Yes.
More.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Jeff Barrett Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Camp.
Yes.
Application to expand and license on Asbury lanes, Little Deer Garden, a plot piece of the premises, also providing a police department and division without all the members in term.
Move it. Second.
Right off.
Yes.
More.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Jeff Barrett Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Camp. Any special events that might, um, feel more as he works it?
Move it.
Second. Captain, right off.
Yes.
More.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Jeff Barrett Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Camp.
Yes.
Let's just, let the executive session of the zone board adjustment to appoint Michelle McGuire to the uninspired term, the unconscionate's faulting number one, for uninspired terms, if you're regular member, candidate work.
Move it. Second.
Captain, right off.
Yes.
More.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Jeff Barrett Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Camp.
Yes.
The housing authority, one of Lori, Jake Alster, Bernie, and Dana, and Carol Ford.
Move it.
Second. Captain, right off.
Yes.
More. Quinn.
No. Well, should I say specifically? No, um, yes on one and no on one.
So it was, yeah, yes on one.
Yes on count.
And no on?
Mr. McCouncil.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Camp.
Yes.
And with respect to dealing with the permission to alternate Nancy, Nancy Carter. Second. Right off.
Yes.
More.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Camp.
Yes.
Steve, when I talk about one thing with regard to the zone board adjustment appointments, did you take a vote with regard to the regular member? There was one regular member vacancy.
Yeah. Michelle McGuire is alternate number one, candidate work with you, right?
Very good, thanks.
And there still is one more spot on the board.
There's one more spot available on the board adjustment. On the, uh, resolution overriding purchase of a fifteen passenger van through state contract, twenty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Move it.
Second. Captain, right off.
Yes.
More.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Jeff Barrett Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Camp. A resolution for mental health grant for two thousand and fourteen, amount of one hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Move it.
Second. Captain, right off.
Yes.
More.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Jeff Barrett Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Camp.
Yes.
Resolution applied for grant for highway traffic safety, drug driving, and abortion.
Move it.
Second. Captain, right off.
Yes.
More.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Sorry, I got distracted.
Jeff Barrett Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Camp.
Yes.
Resolution, from the work session, resolution overriding the city manager requirement to allocate community development budget funding to change neighbors and pay face initiative unit development to group LLC for job training and life skills program.
Move it.
Second. Captain, right off.
Yes.
More.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Jeff Barrett Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Camp.
Yes.
Resolution extending a contract for solid waste collection and disposal services for a two-year period.
Move it.
Second. Captain, right off.
Yes.
More.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Jeff Barrett Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Camp.
Yes.
To delicit for the record. Resolution to city manager requiring for the insertion of a specialized revenue in two thousand and thirteen budget to city manager park. And the amount was about thirty-two thousand.
It actually was changed to thirty-three thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-one cents per so, to top the more, uh, information there. And this has to do with the money that is coming from enterprise owned building or that will be utilized by the city for website and call.
So.
Motion.
Move it. Second.
Captain, right off.
Yes.
More.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Jeff Barrett Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Camp.
Yes.
Resolution overriding city manager park to implement the competitive contracting process to secure vendors to provide following services to the city, website design slash development and maintenance.
Move it.
Second. Captain, right off.
Yes.
More.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Jeff Barrett Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Camp. Resolution urging the legislature, assembly, and state session to vote to override Governor Chris Christie's deal of marriage equality.
Move it. Second.
Captain, right off.
Yes.
More.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Jeff Barrett Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Camp. Resolution, the mayor, council, city manager park overriding certain transfers of property into waterpark to develop air.
Move it. Second.
Captain, right off.
Yes.
More.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Jeff Barrett Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Camp. Resolution authorizing the city manager, go up for our inquiries regarding liability insurance.
Move it. Second.
Captain, right off.
Yes.
More.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Jeff Barrett Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Camp. And a letter of support, a letter of intent from the NJ, for the NJ EIT with respect to Main Street, the Royal Drawers, that one was city engineer.
Move it. Second.
Captain, right off.
Yes.
More.
Quinn.
Yes.
Jeff Barrett Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Camp.
Yes.
Is there a motion to return?
Move it. Second.
Which brings the D. A. G. Grant motion, but, part of it.
You're right, right. So is that a resolution to, what is the? So, is that a resolution to, what's the action the government needs to take there?
It was a budget amendment, so we'd be able to grant it on this.
Okay, so that's in one chap, chapter one fifty-nine, addition of revenue to the two thousand and thirteen budget, accepting that grant money into this budget.
I'm going to give you some recitation.
By most of the time you're studying, you told me your effort, like, whatever you do, and then we can say, we know, we start tomorrow. Yeah, okay, so, if you have any...
Again.
If everybody would want, if the amount is, you have any... Okay, we should just give it to Steve, then jump. And the resolution, the resolution working by the reporting on the, to do a chapter one fifty-nine resolution, accepting grant money, and then to the two thousand and thirteen for that budget.
Motion back.
Move it. Second.
Justice Preto.
Yes.
More.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Camp.
Yes.